Team mate.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're here with Dooley. Dooley played a five dollar game and thought it was a good idea to ship the damn thing. So here he is.
Oh, yeah. Hey, what's up, guys?
So the score, the score, the score, the score is here. Open it up. And you go four thousand, four thousand, four hundred players. For a two thousand dollars, pretty good for a five dollar tournament. Alright, let's see how he did it. And one and then. Jam.
I mean, only start with eighteen, you have max late register, late.
No, no. So, okay, so, so I, I, uh, the, these day ones were running for like two weeks before this. I only got one stack through after firing like maybe five or six bullets. And the stack I got through was thirty-six K chips, which is three and three point six starting stacks. Uh, so I started pretty short, you know, I think first place in this tournament, uh, when day two started was like eighty starting stacks, I want to say, uh, something like that, eight hundred K chips. Uh, so we started pretty short. Um, we got pretty lucky in quite a few spots, so I mean, that always contributes to, you know, winning in a massive field, but. Uh, yeah, we, we were able to. Um, spin it up.
Cool, so day two, day two stack.
Yeah, so this is a day two.
Where's day one?
I mean. It's pretty useless, just, it's just.
Uh, do you start, uh, do you start day? Did you start day two in the money?
Yes, you start day two in the money. Um. You get paid like two buy-ins, I believe, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, just curious if there's any like, uh, bubbles or whatever.
I see him, yeah.
So this is, this is a bounty, this is a bounty tournament. Uh, I do have the poker craft like GG hand history on the side here, so I will try to, um, pull up the hand history and it should show us like any notes I have on the players and the bounties that are in play at the table. Um, so if we do need that, I, I can pull it up, I just, I just might need a second, uh, to pull it up. Yeah, so the bounty on my head right now is not very big, it's only four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um. So, yeah.
But my question here, you go for the jam? Uh. Should we be raising small or is jamming fine?
Uh, I figured the SPR would be a little awkward, if, like, I mean, I'm, I'm, that, like, I'm gonna be all in on the turn anyway, if I, if I just raise small. No, like.
I don't, I don't think you jam either.
I mean, having the jack of hearts here is bad, I know that.
Think you make it like ten big blinds and then you. Whoa.
The SPR is low, I, I, actually, this low you might just call.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Make it, so once you make it eight, seven. But it, like, villain bets bigger than that, so I think here it would be more like ten big blinds. Two and a half eggs, something like this. And then, I know it looks silly, but you keep like, uh, eight big nine behind. Yeah, and then you go with it. Okay, so.
Not confident that's a call on his part, but it's a bounty, so. You know, people are here to party in the, in the first stages of this, uh, day two. It's also eight thirty PM. You know, we're tired, it's a Sunday.
Okay, yeah. Hmm, look. Check, check, what are we gonna do? Oh, okay, I see. Guess we gotta let it go. Two. All. On board, we got a C-bet. I like the sizing too. Now he calls with Turner break, hmm. Do we double barrel? I don't think so.
No, check.
We're pretty high up in range, but I still think it might bet some.
Our best on turn aces, we don't get better hands to fold.
I mean, we don't get better hands to fold, you can't fold pocket sevens?
Yeah, you're gonna get some under pairs to start folding, uh, whatever the third, he, like, he's gotta call the flop with a pair of twos, right? Like, you get some folds.
Okay, so it wants to be super big on that side.
Betting a lot more than I thought, obviously.
Yeah, even more than I thought too, I figured it would be like, you know. But yeah, like outs to the, to the nut, nut straight, left blocker.
Eighty percent pot. Sixty-three percent of the time. Okay.
So you're, you're telling me is I bet it's small?
Yeah, basically. But I wasn't sure if it was a barrel, it looks like their five is a great hard to barrel on. Funny though. Okay, so turn. And then.
Are we betting more with the jack, the spades, or without a spade?
I wanna bet with it.
Yeah, my first thing, my explanation was with as well, but it might not matter.
Yeah, if I was betting like a king, like value, then I'm willing to slow down a little bit with the spade, but with the bluff, I wanna have the spade in here. Betting more with the spade, it looks like.
Yeah.
And then Louis spades bad. King, jack off, I bet king jack off, well, it never slows down, king ten off, is king ten off, um, check back a little more with spade?
Not really, no.
King ten that actually has it. Yeah. Well, it's all good, please. Cool.
Hey, so a good card to barrel, and then I was trying to figure out the strategy here.
There were no bad cards to barrel, barrel and everything, right? At least some.
It looks like it tends not so good, but then it depends on suit a lot. So spade, spade is the worst for the range. Uh, what else? It seems to be released spades. Um, the table says what? Okay. The chart. Just wish we could have them by suit, but. So, yeah, we barrel a lot of turns. That are low, non-spades. A jack and a ten of. A random, like, not the spade ones are pretty good for times. Yeah, so you barrel the turn, you, you probably wanna size up as the machine says. Alright, we open.
I was, I was just trying to go geometric.
Yeah. And it suited. Yeah, so under the gun opens three X, so. And they go three X, you know, they're, they like their hand usually.
You ever call on this spot? Oh, you have him covered, nevermind, it's a PKO and you got him covered.
Uh, I like three betting as opposed to jamming.
Me too, I'm pretty sure it's minus EV to jam, but, uh.
Well, yeah. Yeah, you get someone to call.
No, it can't be minus EV, but.
Anything GT?
Sorry, sorry.
Anybody calling here?
I mean, like, I've been some positive here, I think it's probably called like thirty, forty percent of the time.
Never calling.
You don't think so?
Uh, not really, I don't really wanna call here. I, I'm losing, uh, forty big blinds.
A little buntie, but. You know. Two point one, we get shipped on. It has to do with the size of the bounty here, and then probably just a fold, right?
For sure, just a fold.
I guess we gotta be a bit deeper call there with ace, king suited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like very deep.
It's a pair of board, so sizing should be small, we face a lead, we have a diamond. Top spot. This guy has one hundred seventy big blinds.
I'm calling.
Top spot, what, look at the size.
Does he get leads here, like?
I think we have to call.
Yeah, I mean, he gets leads, I guess, but like eight, nine, like, he's gonna have some draws, some diamonds, I know.
He's a small blind, he should have no leads.
Yeah, he's never.
My rule, when I get dunked into in a spot they shouldn't have leads, I just fold unless I actually have something.
I make a, I make a barrel twice, some people just like to throw a bet out there because it's a ricky board and see if they get you to fold.
Machine is all over.
Oh, I.
I was wondering if it raises, that's funny.
I, I just looked at this one, I, I remember this, uh, this is, uh. My rationale here, just to preface this, uh, because I think I get pretty out of line here, uh, is this guy has a big stack. And he's literally just betting because I have a shorter stack, that's how I see this, this guy, I've seen him play, he's pretty, pretty loose. Doesn't, he looks pretty wrecky, um.
You, you think he's just trying to bully you?
It sucks having a ten and a diamond right now, honestly, in my opinion, even though this bet feels like it's, like, either trying to get a cheap draw, or he's got like a seven or the nuts, but like, I think a ten of diamonds is bad to have.
I agree.
Why?
Well, because it blocks bluffs, right? If he's gonna, if he's gonna lead like, I don't know, ten eight, ten nine, uh, the diamond.
Ten of diamonds.
Ten of diamonds, kind of value.
What hands do you have without a diamond? After the flop?
Who, me?
Yeah.
I mean, we got plenty. Kind of hijack, we got, we got the ten nines of the world, right? The nine, uh, nine eight suited. We got pairs, we got overpairs, we got.
Yeah. We have some pairs, we have some overpairs, but we have a very wide opening range, like, we don't, we have to fold a lot of our offsuit stuff, we have to fold like ace, I don't know, three of hearts on the flop. Uh, queen, jack offsuit, queen, jack of hearts, like, we're folding so much on the flop, like, our, our continuing range is gonna be two overs with the diamond a lot of the time. Uh, just to reach MDF.
You have ace, diamonds, clubs and spades, how about ace eight, ace nine, ace ten with all those suits, they got a lot of stuff without a diamond.
And we see our continuing range on the flop.
We're only folding tw- tw- eighteen, nineteen percent of hands, it looks like. There's no solution for this spot, so there must be leads.
Yeah, problem is here.
Yeah, but you could still go to, right? Because it's, you can still see it in this.
And still look what we do against, uh, flop.
How did they give you an optimal play on the flop on the upload if there is no solution?
Because it solved it against, and against the bet. It's just that it's such a weak solution that this node will never use it, but this is ready to play against a small bet anyway. It's just that if we go deeper down the, the tree, it's gonna be, like, here, there shouldn't be anything. Yeah. Because here there's nothing, so you go from a blank solution, that's where it bugs. So. Yeah, a bit of, of a frisky raise, but if you, if you think your, your guy is out of line, I guess. It's risky.
Now you're gonna go for it, I guess, huh?
I mean, like, that was my intention, I said, if he checks the fly, any non-diamond river, I was jamming. Um, if he checks.
This is gross, because like, are you really jamming queens here now, when the five is a one-liner?
If a diamond came, you could, I, I'd see, I'd see that as a reason to bluff when they're gonna bind.
He shouldn't have that many five X in range.
I mean, I don't.
I'm jamming queens for sure.
I don't like the raise on a turn, but I think we're stuck.
I think you wanna have a diamond during his turn, I don't, because you wanna be blocking just flush draws, I think diamond's bad on the river.
Goodbye.
What could he play like that, that he folds to a twenty big blind? I think I'm calling a seven here. Six is always falling. I don't know, maybe your read was great, that he was just trying to push you out of the pot. Okay, so here you go again. What are you doing, Dooley?
PKO.
Don't like this.
He watches you.
Fifty big blind effective.
What the hell?
He's not isoling.
Like. Like, Dooley's had enough.
We'd like this more if we were.
I'd like this more if we were shallower, or if there wasn't a hundred sixty big blind stack at the table. Um. I like raising to like ten with anything we wanna ISO. And then that way we have a raise call range and a raise fold range. Like if the one sixty stack jams.
It's just a bit small, I think. More isolated happier.
You're gonna have some big, big sizes.
There's no flush draws, rainbow, we don't have that strong of a hand. The nine.
Rainbow, there's two to a straight and we're versus small blind, so I think it will size up a fair amount.
Who is Jack ten four? I'd see it, but Jack nine four, I don't know.
So in my head, I, I treated this board like Jack ten four. Which I know you size up on, uh, that was like the only reason I sized up, it's Jack high board, I have a Jack.
Jack ten for you, don't always size up. I don't think.
Usually, um, and I think.
Jack ten low?
It's a range bet, so you.
Low in general.
It's a range bet, you bet small.
Well, there's a lot of big bets, so it's fine.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's different, it's different if we're, we're big blind.
You're right, sorry.
Yeah, lots of sizing up.
Fifty fifty.
Can you check how it differs if it's big blind? Uh. Curious, I bet it's probably having big sizing still.
It'll have big sizing, just less.
Yeah. Because what are we, sixty deep? Eighty deep?
Against a big blind, it's actually going all in.
Oh, more.
Actually overbetting or betting pop, sizing up, and there's no more checking. Whereas, what is checking here?
And some big bets, yeah, huh, cool.
Check. On the turn, the nine pairs, we got the jack, but don't beat many other jacks. Mine is pretty bad, but we're against this small blind.
I like checking, I don't like having a ten in our hand to bet, again, we're blocking draws. Like, I think the ten's the worst card to have in your hand to bet when you're value betting here.
Yeah, I would check a lot.
Really?
I'm curious if it will bet.
I thought the ten was great to have here, because you have the upper dangler to the nine. And you block everything, basically.
But like, when he calls once, we're, we're gonna push his hand to like draws or pairs, right? So, where he's, he's less likely to have ten queen or something when we hit the ten, so it's more likely he has a pair, and then when the nine hits. Uh, he could have better jacks, he could have three of a kind. We're blocking his draws.
We block queen, ten, king, ten, he'll probably just fold pocket sixes now, maybe. Unless you have him tagged as like super sticky, uh. I like checking.
We're just, yeah, look at that, wow, even king, jack, king, jack checks a lot. We check a hundred. We just check a lot here.
Yeah, very.
He should dunk some too, probably, even though he's the small blind.
Uh, only notes on this player is he's, he's, uh, just pretty loose. Not really a stationy player, but like. He gets out of line, he has a lot of bluffs.
An easy call here, no other option.
Yeah, I just knocked them off, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I agree, this, this hand's way too good to bluffers. We could, we could bluff raise like a, like a seven, right? Like a seven, eight or seven, ten?
Yeah, it's a very wide, uh, proof operation.
Out of blind with this small blind for sure.
He is a sixty-two percent V-Pip at this point in the tournament.
He could definitely have the nine, but he could have a lot of other stuff.
Can we jam here?
No, sixty.
It's too much.
Or like, raise to like twelve or something.
I don't, huh?
I'd say no, I'd say no, but there it is.
I like it. I like it.
I have only. I, I do this a lot versus slippers. It's more like six to seven for me, um, which I can still get a lot of folds and let me play a pot.
So, are you?
Well.
Picking this size to, to call off the jam?
Yes. So this sizing is to call off the jam and then fold if the sixty big blind stack. We're basically putting the one stack all in, while being able to fold if a big stack jams.
I can see it, yeah. Ooh, it's too big.
In position, Dooley.
Yeah, it's huge.
We wanna go like six point seven, right? Seven, maybe.
I mean, if this guy's a fish and he's calling everything, I really don't hate it.
What about limping here?
I would go smaller still, though, I would go like seven point.
I would.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't limp LP because this guy, to his left, passive, we just saw him limp from under the gun. So I am not, uh, implementing a polarized strategy versus that player.
I'm RFI-ing always.
Oh, that, that, that eight big blind raise, by the way, the player was against, uh. Well, I was talking this whole time. It's awkward. Uh, the player I made it, uh, it against is, uh, I guess the out of line tag, he, the note I have on him is he three-bet chammed sixty-five big blinds with pocket sixes. So. He's, he's just an out of line player, so.
I mean, that's sometimes the thing.
Uh.
Hmm, bottom of the ranging, it's okay.
Multiway, pretty sure it's not. A little bit of ICM, a little bit of multiway.
Yeah, maybe if you had the opener covered and a PKO, it's fine, but I would fold, uh, this year.
What about ten nine off? I think it's fine.
Ten nine, I would probably play.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think this is bottom of the range, I think it's in color for, it's not.
Probably right.
You guys think? I think it's a little loose, no? I don't know, I want to play.
Where you can chuck one chip in and maybe flop the nuts, it's not a terrible candidate. I don't like this.
Yeah, I don't like this either, honestly, I don't squeeze this far down my range. Ace nine suited, maybe?
I don't know, I think. I don't know if it's crazy.
I think it too just wants to fold, like, I think you're gonna pull from your wheel combos, and it's like maybe a seven, a six suited. Some offsuit branch, some like queen jacks and king queen offsuit. I don't know, we can see.
Where, yeah. It's still early, right? Or, oh no, we're in the money, right? It's day two, or is this?
Yeah, we're, we're in the money. I know, we're in the money.
Why are you squeezing? Is that a good squeeze? I don't think.
I mean, we get, we get lots of dominating to fold, like.
It's probably okay.
With like ace ten off, you know, are they gonna take it to the streets?
You're gonna be way more linear squeezing into multiple players, I think.
That's the thing, Ken, that's the thing I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Didn't think that was very good.
King queen off, maybe, ace queen off, the suited Broadway stuff.
Low jack cut off button.
Like ten X.
They feel like they're pulled from like ace five offsuit, maybe, something like that, no, too far. It's max suited. Yeah, ace two suited is just usually a fold. All these types of spots.
Still pretty poor.
You luck box.
Yeah, baby.
Have you ever three-bet this? At all, like some frequency?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Uh.
Like fifteen percent?
This deep, I don't know.
Yeah, these crappy offsuit aces, I, I like the three bets, throw three bets out there.
I think it's slivers.
I think it's too deep, was it not? Seventy big blind effective.
Tell somebody offsuit stuff.
I think they're mostly suited here, no? I raise this some.
That's the chippy V range, though, right? Well, I guess we're still kinda close to that, close enough.
But it's more like sixty D, eighty D.
I overdote with the six and the seven, I, I don't really particularly like playing those hands much, so I three-bet them more often.
Right.
So that's a range bet board for this guy?
Who's it?
I don't think we need to, uh, bet turn, I guess, anyhow, yeah, he's gotta bet that board, right?
I don't think so. I think he's fifty fifty here.
I think he has.
Exactly, because he polarizes.
He's not polar, he's betting smaller checking.
I think he has zero checks, you can have both polar, you can have large, uh, range bets too.
Wait, but this is, sorry.
EP versus button.
Single raise?
Oh, I thought we were, I'm sorry, I thought we were big blind.
But even if he's in position, single razor, he still doesn't seat bet that board a hundred, I don't think, right?
No, it's fifty fifty, but it's more like seventy thirty here.
Yeah, I thought it was button versus big blind.
Yeah, so not a good spot to bet.
With ICM, the offsuit aces come in a little more. With fifty percent.
One. Okay, yeah, whatever. Yeah, like the three bet, C-bet's small. Sizing out, it's not the end of the world. We're kind of deep. Okay, we're kind of deep, so probably a good size.
Uh, sizing up is due to a note, he's just a, he's just a calling station.
I think the texture also allows it.
You three-bet huge in position with queens, and then you three-bet small out of position with ace, king, just for better than that.
Gotta play bigger pots in position, obviously.
Uh, I think that's a little too much, right?
Yep.
Yeah, you can't overbet here, I don't think, because we both have the nuts, right?
And because equity shifted a lot, a lot of overbet spots are like, where nothing changes, and like ace, king, like, on a, on a six here, that'd be a good overbet.
So, on the flop, it even wants to size up even more. Wants to go seventy-five percent pot, but on the turn. You need to bet like a quarter. I wouldn't bet a quarter on it, I don't know.
No big bets. There's completely.
No big bets, yeah.
Completed equity, both of us have.
Straight come in.
And this is, this is, again, this is strictly based on a, on a read that he's a calling station, like, he's, he's not folding an ace there. Ever.
Well, to your turn jam. You make it kind of easy, right?
Does he have?
Yeah, if you, if you bet bigger on the flop, uh, the, 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 the turn jam is easier to, to make.
Maybe, yeah.
Well, and, let's talk about, let's talk about our range, like, I know we have a good hand with lots of equity. But you know, like, there's a flush, there's a straight, there are two pairs, there are sets, like, top pair, top pair with a decent draw is like not top of range.
Yeah, like it is, huh, on the flop?
With the.
On turn, I mean.
On the turn, yeah, you, you.
You know, like, it's a good hand, I mean, I'm, I'm V-pipping, like, there's pretty much no way I end up holding turn.
Ah, but he has a read, so he's trying to get paid by his station, so.
I just think. I think, I think that's. So like, he has ace jack sometimes, he has ace ten sometimes, he has ace four sometimes, then we're like having to hit our outs.
Yeah.
That's true, I think this is definitely one of my leaks, though, where I like. Uh, I get very jam happy, or like, I just make it like massive, because I have like a specific read or whatever. But I think in the long run, it's gonna end up, uh, or it is, it is costing me some AV. Uh. I assume, man, that's part of why I'm like, jumping on this, because like, I see the same thing in my game, and I think.
You can, you guys could bet like sixty or eighty percent pot here, it would be fine, I think.
I saw a really nice description. I forget if it was, it was out of Jonathan Little or Phil Goff on, on one of their social medias, and they said. Be careful about, you know, trying so hard to get insurance when that insurance is too expensive. Like here, it's, you know, the, the expenses, like you just get snapped off when you're behind. And um, you know, maybe you don't get called when you're ahead that much.
I think at twenty-eight here would be pretty good. Oh, let's get the aces. No. JK. Not one.
Especially in a small player pool, like. They might eventually catch on and quit paying you off when you go massive.
Call again. Call and lose.
I think I feel so confusing here.
I would squeeze her. Why do you just call?
Um, I, I don't know, I, I mix here. Like, sometimes I call, sometimes I three bet, but I, I like to.
Things are too deep. We're too deep to just call.
Yeah, that's fair.
I'm not sure actually about this one.
Never call.
Yeah, we gotta look at ICM, though, right?
But we're in the money.
We're like twenty-five percent of the field, I think, like something. Less. Or like twenty-five percent of the day two.
Of the day two, yeah.
Maybe we can have a look.
PKO.
Let's say PKO.
Gotta be a majority race, though, I would think. I would think it's still a majority race, if not, I'm still full.
ICM PKO.
And you're, uh, you're above average stack or no? What is average stack or no? Some of that matters, too.
Seventeen here. So big average.
You have a final table clicked.
Also, this might be because. Um, I think my three bet here was pretty high. I think my three bet was around like something like fifteen percent here or something. So I think I was like intentionally not, or trying not to three bet as much, I, I don't know.
You wanna be a little more polar, right, where you're, you're not minding if you're four bet?
This player is, is like never four betting with a bluff here. Um, that same calling station. Guy.
Alright. Well, ICM PKO twenty-five percent left, big stack against big stack, you wanna call it left with this check. Ooh, you didn't raise.
I think that's justifiable. If I'm gonna skew my raising range, it's gonna be more high-low combos, because I block fewer, you know, block fewer combos with that. It's like, I'm gonna raise ace five more than this check.
Right.
I'm gonna raise.
Hundred percent.
Like ace king is the one I wanna raise probably the least, although that might interact a little bit with what blocks the straight flush. I don't know how that works out, but still, if you wanna. Raise more high-low stuff.
But then you have to raise turn, right? And then it looks. Well, I don't know.
I think this would be a good flop to raise with this type of, you know?
Yeah, but the jack you block is.
But again, like, are you?
I think you would never raise.
Are you raising one hundred percent of um nut flushes? Like, you can't raise a hundred percent of nut flushes, can we?
No.
Not a hundred, but.
So then which ones do we, you know, like, how do we split?
But this one, I, on this texture, I would raise a lot of nut flusher.
See, but like, we kind of want him to have hands like jack of clubs, nine off. Jack of clubs, ten off, you know, like, we're okay if he has hands like that.
Yeah, but it, we, it's even better if he has queen of clubs or king of clubs, right? And those are available.
I mean, yeah, for sure.
The jack's not as bad as a queen or king for raising.
Yeah, although. Interact with the pairs and with the straight in a bad way, like, we'd love him to have like a straight with a single club can barrel here, right? Like, and that flop, maybe that turn. If, you know, thinking about like, what are we trying to cooler here? And I think like a straight with a club, you know, it's out there.
Yeah, so we see the.
But they'll also call a raise and call a turn bet.
Usual pattern, the high lows wanna get like, when you get an, an, an ace five. Well, I wanna say you get better aces to fold, but it's the nut flush. Alright, both are the nut flush, so it's probably not that, right?
Yeah, you wanna unblock their continues, like Tim said, it's like very predictable behavior here, right?
I think it's less, yeah, exactly. Like, Louis, you're right, in other cases, you wanna get down maybe he has to fold, but the way I think of it here is. They have more combos of flushes to call you down with when you have ace five, because they have all the king X, all the queen X, all the jack X. King, then they don't have all the king X of clubs, and that's a lot of combos.
You want them to have a high card you were.
Exactly. And maybe two, you'd be fine if they have two, like, you're okay if they have queen jack of clubs.
Not, not much raising, oh. Well, fifty fifty, right? Well mixed. What is he doing?
That's super nuts.
Check call, check call, dunk.
I don't like the dunk.
It's not bad, because people check back too much here after two barrels.
I mean, he over, like, he basically plotted it, but I figured there's no way this guy is folding to a thirty percent of that. Like, no way.
I think you're right.
I would go smaller or check.
Yeah, like pay to C, three point six.
Eight?
Nah, like, yeah, temper twenty percent, like maybe seven.
Yeah, I kind of don't think this is a thing.
Okay.
I, he probably had a bluff that he wouldn't have fired river with anyway, but I would let him try.
Exactly, but if it's only at like a ten percent chance that he, you know, goes for it, that he has the heart, I'm like, man, it's all the dice.
Like you said, what, what can he be potting it with there? That. Is now gonna check back, like, if he has a king of clubs, he, well, I don't know.
Appears that way.
This is kind of dicey, though, right? Like. You have a big stack. Do you wanna four bet get in versus UTG UTG one?
Yes, this is, this is, this is the type of player that'll, that'll five bet jam on me with ace five suited.
Oh.
Which one?
Then why not get it in?
The, the three better.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
Five point four. Oh, notably, if the big blind jams action is reopened, so maybe we're going for some sneaky. Something.
I think he got a four bet.
Try to trap them all.
Well, both players in this pot were profitable players, so I was just a little bit more cautious, I don't know.
Yeah, I would four bet a lot there, honestly, really.
I usually do too, I, I don't know. A bit of a mistake, I think.
I feel like at that stage of the tournament, it's not a slam dunk get in, but also like what else can you really do? Yeah, I don't know.
You play on the sandwich, we check the flip every time, on the third, we check, and then we check fold, that's probably good. Uh, I don't like your size here.
Yeah, I probably size up if we bet, right?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a poorer bet, too.
I think you just size up a lot here.
I think he went in between. I think you can go small or big. Two point five's kind of nothing.
Pretty connected board for big blind. I don't know that we have many small bets. I think we'd have a decent checking range on some big bets.
It's a pretty bad board for a big maker.
I would go one point eight, or I would go four. Or four, four point five.
Checking.
I know overbet, crazy. I don't find he overbets. I know there's a lot of checks, I, so I know we're poorer, but I didn't think we were that poor.
So not really using the small sides, we're all over the board. With big sizes.
Check makes sense. Hand us some nice properties where we don't wanna get raised, really.
But I want a tough spot. This is a car we're gonna wanna barrel a lot, but we bet small.
Yeah.
But I still think you gotta do it.
Yeah.
Size up, you're fifty, sixty percent pot.
The eighty some, eighty, eighty some percent, I think.
Look at this. Machine.
Fifty-five, okay.
That's smaller than I would think.
So why do you not barrel here, Dooly? Don't you think it's a scary card for the big line? He has a seven or a three, starting to shake a little bit when he sees that jack and you're that big. Even a nine would consider like folding, no?
He's a calling station, he's not folding.
Oh, he's not? Oh, okay.
So you'll get, so I'll call you down with like queen, five of fucking clubs or whatever he's got. You get him with king high, it's great.
Okay, you might have dodged one here.
I don't know.
Looks like he wants to play with you a lot.
Uh, is that him? Let me check.
You can go kind of big here, too, I think.
Oh, it is, it is him, okay.
Oh, he's only got sixteen behind, you don't have to get too big.
The range is bad. Bad river. Check back, win some pot.
Do we check that turn?
Yeah.
No, but are you sure? Like, I, I thought.
Well, it's over there, it's thirty percent checking.
Yeah, there's a lot of betting, right? I thought so. I checked too much there.
Make an eight fold, make.
I think as I have a king, I can. Yeah.
Probably. I mean, he might not fold hearts, though. I don't know.
Well, you'll be ahead of hearts that continue, a lot of them.
You're, you still got your range.
True.
You're still got his king, his queen, his jack. You know, on this texture. I think that's what's going on here.
It's a value bet versus hearts, that's a good point.
We're just betting all of our aces and then bottom of range.
And a nut cutter.
Well, okay, you cover.
Not standard.
Basically the only reason, but I think we're getting pretty deep here.
What do you mean? Only, you wouldn't defend jack eight normally?
Hmm, if it's a stack that covers me with ICM and a PKO, probably not.
Versus button? Think you guys are crazy.
I would call.
Lines are eight thousand, sixteen thousand, so we're definitely, we're getting there.
And, yeah, just. Jacks.
Oh, you're gonna hate this.
Oh my goodness, why do you not call? You get rid of all of his blush when you do that.
I would raise, but not all in. I would go like, I would go like three.
Three point five, yeah. Yeah, break it onto two streets if he has just some like, I don't believe you. There was a, there was a jack on the turn, too. Yeah, and with the heart, that should um lean us a tiny bit towards needing, you know, to fast play it less. Thank you, right?
This is never a big bet. Why do you bet big here?
I. Can't tell you. We have big bets in range, but uh, doesn't need to be the same. Figured I'd just get better to fold.
You, like you're.
Not better, but, but like, you know, two overs, I don't, I don't know, man, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
It's like if you have bucket queen on the ace high board. Right, you're one pip under the high cards, you wanna check.
It's a little different. He shouldn't have too many aces. But we have a big check raising strategy on these like lowish, mediumish connected um pot out of position.
And then if you're like, do anything here, you need a club, right?
A lot, yeah. Yeah, we could check call. I mean, this offer does say you could bet small, that's okay.
If we check and he, and he stabs thirty, I wonder what our raise frequency is.
I've, I've looked at this. Um, I was doing some training on this a while back. Um, it kind of looks like, it almost looks like, like. Out of position check raising, like, you're gonna check raise some like jack ten, you're gonna check raise eights, you're gonna check raise low over pairs, like. It, it kind of makes sense, the hands that you check raise.
And this would just call.
I've seen it check raise nines on a ten high board in a similar scenario. Here we're calling.
Yeah, low overcards, overpairs, like more ten nine, jack nine, stuff that has interactivity. Some high-low aces.
Forty-five percent check raise. Oh no, it's seven, definitely was, yeah, he shifts screens and I, so it's like eighteen percent, right?
Yeah, it's still a lot, you're right.
Yeah.
In general, or this hand was doing none, right, or very little?
Yeah, basically none.
Or best ball.
Alright, so we blast and he calls.
Now you're screwed.
So he, he tank calls, he doesn't snap, well.
Tank calls.
According, according to the replay. Uh, so I have the GG replay on the side. And it shows him taking, uh, like the, the clock.
So, yeah, I would probably just check again.
That's an ugly river.
Wait, what?
It's an ugly and all true. This here is pretty bad. Check, check on a deuce turn. Like, if you bet the flop, you get a deuce on the turn, you're supposed to double.
That's a complete brick.
Yeah. And then a ten or black betting, I don't even know what you're doing here.
But I don't mind that, I mean.
Then value from ace high?
Well, he probably has a, a six sometimes. Yeah, a six makes a lot of sense when he tank calls. No backdoor, but.
Retentive.
Very thin. All in.
That's small.
Why small?
Check.
It's a disconnected board.
Why do you wanna check, Danny? You're such a nit sometimes.
A range bet.
Never checking.
Twenty percent maybe, pot.
I think this is one of the hands that likes to check here, no?
Why? Why would you check here?
I don't know.
I have some big bets. Way more than I thought.
You wanna check, you damn it.
You know, you just like stated a, like a fact, but like not what you wanted me to do, and you were expecting that I was gonna interpret it. I missed that.
It's a mirror off mute.
Is he talking to his daughter or something?
I don't know, with somebody, not to me. Hopefully.
What if you didn't have the diamond? What if you had ace five of, of clubs?
Board that I need, just see bet.
Yeah, you just bet.
Okay.
It's just such a dry flop, honestly. It's just such a dry flop, honestly. Small bets, they're gonna be overfolded even with a small bet.
Alright, I don't know. Maybe it's a, a, uh deeper, deeper depths. We're checking there.
I don't think so.
Small tree bed, one position, kind of priced in. Am I wrong for calling?
Yeah, because I see I'm on patience.
So for, you're not quite deep enough. You're not, you're not getting direct pile odds. You're in position. Maybe that changes it, but I just fold, man. You just, I'm gonna get out flopped every time. Nine out of ten times, I'm gonna get out flopped.
Machine says. What an amazing fold. It is the only pair you fold.
I forge, you're starting to fold some. I mean, you know, even if he has aces, what can you do, right? You just gotta stuff it in this guy's face. You gotta run your equity here, right? Oh, he just called?
Yep.
I thought he opened off of that. Alright.
I was trying to understand, man. I was doing my best.
That's the same calling station guy. I, I don't understand him. I thought I do, but I, I just don't.
I like it bad. I can small bet on a monobombo. Oh, this could get fresh.
I think, I think I should be preventing here, I think. Even though it's a jack versus early position.
I'm gonna go on, I would call.
Anybody jamming?
No.
We might be final three. No, actually, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. We're really deep here, though.
Jamming is out of the question.
For me, it is.
Feel like this is like final thirty-six, I wanna say.
It's just calling.
Thirty-seven?
It's under the gun. You aren't high enough.
Neither is queen or is king of chair.
Man, the range is gonna be so different, though. It's, it's, this is chippy V. It's a PKO and it's ICM.
PKO, you might even pure, I mean, um, ICM, you might even pure call ace queen off here.
Check, oh. That's a very difficult spot. You gotta continue, right?
Yeah, you gotta call. So high up in range.
That was a replay of like what I sounded like in real life. I sighed and I folded.
Don't know about this one. What do you guys think?
Nah, you can't. It's your best offsuit. It's your best, well, you have ace queen suited, but it's like your best high card unmade hand.
Hey, I mean, this, the machine is folding.
It's only calling with the ace of clubs.
It's folding in chippy V.
Machine, please duly played it pretty well.
I'm a fish.
I'm calling too much here with.
Confirmed.
Okay, Dooley, well played, well played. Check. Hmm.
Did I check?
You check here.
I don't hate it.
You don't hate it.
I, I. Usually don't like it when there's, you know, it's a two-tone bird, but. It's pretty trashy ace.
My.
Small blind flat.
I'm checking this a lot, honestly. Too much, looks like.
Why? You're never beat.
This is a player that's very capable of check raising.
Let him check raises queen ten.
A majority bet here.
How are we never beat?
What beats us, Ken?
You don't think he has better aces in his range?
He's eight of clubs.
They're all three bets.
All of them?
Is this not to lose?
I mean, he could have like ace ten suited once in a blue moon.
One point seven bigs.
I see, I see what you're doing.
It's a lot of like worse suited aces, some king X, some Broadway draws.
That was yours.
Kind of unnecessary.
Uh, you know, it's interesting. Big blind is gonna go for a big blinds effective. Tree betting on that again with eight is not great. Tree betting from this type dap is not great. But, you know, there's a little something here.
Were you, did you plan to call a jam or fold to a jam? Do you remember?
Fold to a jam.
Okay, then it's.
I think.
It's, it sucks, but if you were gonna call a jam, I would jam yourself.
So the guy's notes are out of line bluffs and overvalues ace X. Not really much of a useful note here, but. This was a very pivotal spot in the tournament, I think. This is. Yeah. So I, I, by the way, for, for context, like I almost never three bet eights, like ever, or like low pocket pairs, like even nines, I don't three bet that often. But I don't know, here I just, I just chose to three bet it.
We see like um pocket fives, pocket sixes doing this sort of thing sometimes. And with like the intention to fold to a jam, so with ICM and stuff, I feel like shifting it up a little bit. Kind of makes.
Okay, Dooley, your turn sizing is getting on my nerves. I think you need to find the right, like you just need to bet sixty percent or eighty percent. On many, many, many scenarios with, from what we've seen today, if you would have bet sixty percent would have worked great. This one is like, we're always jamming the turn. It's like. You got a call, it's Jack.
If you bet like half pot there, your bluffs have a better price and then he kind of is just gonna put it in anyway, right?
I think so. Queen eye against a big blind, we gotta see that here.
Bet one.
Oh my goodness. Okay. Why one? Why do you think this is a one spot? It's not.
One point.
Just a bit small.
One point three. Twenty percent is what I would bet here. Yeah. I mean, it's like pretty as disconnected as they come, queen high.
Oh, Dooley. Y'all had a queen.
Oh, this is a little splashy.
You weren't the only one that didn't have his queen. Oh my goodness. Okay, so. You're losing your mind now. I see it.
We're just getting wrecked by tens here.
The thing is, you're like, he misses this board, so I think your idea is good. But the thing is, yeah, he has pocket tens or ace nine too much. Don't think.
Could have like ace queen with a club. I mean, what are people stabbing here? Like? Sevens. I don't know.
Any high card with a club in it. Think people are range betting way too much here, but it's actually good.
Jack ten.
Mint lick. And then you get away with it.
Surely you had the best hand when he folds.
We got a call here, Louie.
Yeah, we're priced in, right?
I think, I think I, I. I think I tanked, man.
Can you tell me the size of the bounty?
Uh, you're gonna hate this, thirty-six dollars.
It's a big bounty. It's really close, really close, cause it's late positions, small.
It's like not close, though. This guy is, this guy's three bet is not very high. I know he's short, but. So I don't know, I just, I don't understand how we open king seven suited not to call off eight big blinds. It's just like, that's walking the PKOs, man. If you don't wanna, if you don't play, if you wanna gamble like.
Even if he shows you king queen, you have to call, right?
Yeah, and he has like ace queen, ace jack. I mean, you're fine.
He starts over king queen. I made my mind full.
Yeah, I think if you turn yourself for king queen, I'm folding.
Yeah, but.
But it's more unlike the, all the ace X, ace queen, ace jack, it's ten, it's nine, yeah.
Oh my goodness. No heart, so we gotta fold, right? Limb. Ace five off.
Uh, this was, this was a misclick. This was a misc- I remember this distinctly. I misclicked.
Okay.
Likely excuse.
No, I swear to God, I misclicked.
He's just gonna get there now. Oh, you break.
There's a very tragic misclick later.
I mean, worse than this, yeah?
Oh, wait, wait, is this against the player that I think it's, it's against? Hold on.
Are you gonna ship it?
Hold on, hold on.
Put the money in or give up here?
I don't know, man. I think I give up. I've locked the nut straight. I don't know.
You put chips in.
This guy's notes have some uh not very nice things. There's, there's some not very nice things in the note section here on this guy.
You put chips in on the flop?
Yeah, I, I bet one point five and then I bet four into seven on the turn.
Oh, the old C bet limp with range advantage? I mean limp, C bet with range advantage?
So this end is.
But like, look. But like, look at this. Okay, yeah, this guy is, this guy is just, uh, he's just clueless. Like he's just not a, this is final two tables, by the way, I'm pretty sure, or final three.
Am I having a stroke?
How does he not jam turn?
All he has to do is click it back on the flop and he takes the chips.
Oh, PS, he's in the small blind.
I don't like this three bet.
You, you afraid to be up against ten, ten eight off again?
It's just that this tag dap, I think this hand plays better as a call.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Three bad, C bad. Jam the turn. See, this one I don't mind as much.
Yeah, yeah, for three quarters pot. Yeah. Oof, got called pretty late.
The station.
This is a.
If he's just gonna call a jam on a turn with that, you gotta check back and realize your equity and just fucking give up, I guess.
Yeah. I didn't know he would call a jam with, with a three there. Uh, yeah, that's when, that's when the notes followed. That's, that's when I uh spent, you know, a good thirty seconds typing.
How do we not call the king seven, but this one we're right in?
With two players still to act.
Yeah.
Uh, his bounty might have been massive. One sec.
Must have been, right? Okay, you got him. Let's go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, dude. This guy had a eighty dollar bounty on his head.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so he, he uh.
Do you see that here without the, the club? I think I would.
Or she's big blind. Uh, yeah, we can bet this. It's probably a range bet.
Ace high board against big blind. You gotta done a lot, even against this player.
I don't like one big blind on this texture.
What if you hit a nine on the turn?
Well, you still gotta bet small, I think, right?
Uh, it's gonna mix, probably have some half pot bets again, but uh, yeah, but I just don't think there's a one big blind bet concept here.
Isn't, is it more of a check on the flop? Never checks. So you can bet all kinds of sizes on the flop as long as you bet. But it's not really, well, okay, okay, it's fine.
BB is the same.
Hit the turn.
Oh.
Size up.
Uh, he leads a near here, huh? Honestly, I would fold. He's only got seven blind.
Eh, yeah, eh. How big's his bounty? Oh, he led into two players as well.
I didn't even notice that.
And we don't have a spade. Yeah, probably better to let it go.
Let them have their fun.
You have a pair draw.
Is this a push?
Uh, he didn't have a big bounty also. He had a twelve.
No, you're too deep.
I think it's our, one of our best limps.
You, I think it's a raise first then, though.
Oh, maybe it's a raise.
You raised the suited side more than the offsuit, right?
No one is jamming.
Nah, just open raising.
Do you?
Free X.
Okay.
Mainly raise.
I wanna bet here. We make our ace. We gotta see better, I think. Makes it look too tricky when we check it.
I agree. Yeah, no reason to.
What a bad river now. Yeah, flop, never checking. Is this a good spot to block that?
Yeah, well, like, what do you do if he raises here? Are you gonna fold?
Yeah.
I mean, it looks kinda.
Uh, he's a, he's a pretty straightforward player, uh, so probably folding it. Kind of weird though, cause we're chopping with other low aces, so we're trying to, like, we're not trying to get a call with a chop. And chippy V, I mean, I'm jamming there to push him off a chop sometimes.
The four bet all in. There it comes.
We like it.
You have enough.
Almost against the same guy.
You have his king. Uh, you gotta call here, right?
Happy days.
Easy, yeah.
Let's trade the flash.
He got there.
Yeah, but we were heading all the way. He almost got there.
He got the wrong, wrong color.
So this guy limbs. It's a bunch of shorties on our table.
Alright, this seems like the okay spot for the, yeah, for that.
Think fine.
Ninety dollars on the nineteen big blind guy's head. And ninety dollars on the ten big blind. Ninety big lines on the, or ninety dollars on the ten big blind stack.
Not gonna win.
I don't think so. He could have nines.
Just the nuts.
Look at you, Dooley.
That's a bit loose.
Opening it up, getting punished.
Dude, there's an eight, that eight big blind stack in the big line has ninety dollars on the head.
I kinda don't like two point five Xing it. And it can give it away a half a chip whenever you get rejammed on.
Where are we at ICM wise, though? Like, we get deep like.
This is, this is, this is.
It's final what?
Final two.
Yeah, so like, you don't have to go big king two suit, right?
I think it makes it better than if we weren't as deep, right?
From the cut off?
When you're, when you cover them all, you have a blocker, suited blocker. This guy limp jams, what's? Alright.
Yeah, but like he's in, he's in, he's, he's gonna call off like ten big blind jam, like i- i- it two tables left. I don't know if I wanna be opening king two suited to call. Yeah, but like, he's in, he's in, he's, he's gonna call off like ten big blind jam, like, i- 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 two tables left, I don't know if I wanna be opening king two suited to call off a jam.
Lose turn, I don't think you should be checking here.
Yeah, that's true, Ken. That's why I would just min raise, so it's like easier to fold if they.
Yeah, yep.
Think you should barrel the turn here. Okay, we're really short. Hmm. See, okay, I see what you're doing now, I understand. It's too short to play poker. Can't really barrel the turn.
Oh, but we can.
Well, look at the size, right? He's, he got four behind. You don't have really full equity. But then look at this, you have some. Okay, could this be the final table?
This is the final table.
Oh, it is.
Alright, this is a spot that I posted and there's a lot of questions about it.
Gonna call here, nothing else in do?
No, I think I'd rather three bet than call.
Okay, why?
And I'd rather fold than call, because, uh, like, a jack comes on the flop, am I happy to? Call it down with all these big stacks, I.
That doesn't make sense here, though. Would a fold ever make sense here?
Yeah, I'm folding.
Why? For one big blind when your last act.
Because the, when under the gun opens and you get calls from like middle position, you're, when you hit a queen or a jack, you're often gonna be dominated.
You're lucky if you're not dominated, like, you're trying to make two pair or a straight, basically.
Yeah, but it's still worth it to see a flop at that point.
I'm, I'm with Vera here, honestly, guys, uh, I think we have, have to find a way to play this. I don't like squeezing here, cause.
Here's the thing.
There's a bounty.
If you flat, you get a jack high flop. I'm like ready to just check fold.
How much bad?
But not check fold, like, you look at the action, like, if one guy bets and everyone folds, then you call against him, you know, like, you get to, you get to read the.
And you have a bounty in there, you have a pretty decent bounty. What was the size on that?
It's, it was twenty six dollars, it wasn't, it wasn't.
Yeah, so I keep forgetting it's a PK. I keep forgetting it's a PK, but we also are getting really deep where like payouts are pretty getting considerable, I would imagine, so like, where, where do you, how do you, uh, weigh that?
So, the thing I was thinking about, um, about squeezing is like, well, think about our classic squeezing ranges, right, like, these suited jacks. Um, like, low offsuit ace, or low suited aces, excuse me. Um, I don't know about this hand fitting into those categories.
Offsuit, I think, is ace, queen, ace, king, that's it.
Exactly, maybe. Yeah, I'd like king jack more, you know?
Yeah, I don't think that gets involved with the squeeze.
Yeah, I don't think this is the craziest thing. You, you do see, like, these queen, jack, king, jack show up and, but more likely against two opponents, but then it's also like, what the heck are five opponents even doing?
I mean, I can't remember seeing king jack heads up as we, like, in a squeeze, like, um, versus two players. I, I can't remember seeing king jack come in.
So Dooly, tell us what your reasoning behind this squeeze.
There's so much dead money in the pot, there's a bounty in play, these are some fairly capped ranges, if these people are just, just calling versus under the gun. Um, I'm chip leader, people need to be respectful, in general, um. The player to my left, like, is, he's, he's, he's pretty straightforward and he's like relatively nitty, so. He's gonna be folding a lot, like, he's, he's gonna be folding king, jack suited, I think he'll fold king queen. Um, I think we'll get a lot of better hands to fold and we'll just get to play for the bounty for free, and even if we lose the thirteen big blinds, like, yes, it sucks, uh, if we get jammed on, um. But I think the risk is worth the reward potentially, um.
Can't you say the same thing about seeing the flop, though, and just calling?
No, because then I could just be getting, uh, being taken the value time when there's a jack and, and I'm playing against king jack. Hey, like, or, or like, unless I make two pair, like, or, or a nut straight on the flop, like, I, I am not happy. Uh, sure, I'll battle if the flop is like, I don't know, like, like, there's an eight and a nine, eight, nine X or something, and like, I have the backdoor flush, backdoor straight, and I'll, get pretty crazy and I'll check raise, um, but, oh, nah, I, I really don't want this many players in the pot, in general.
Okay, so it's close, man. What did people say about this squeeze, in general?
Um.
I don't, I, I, I like the squeeze because he, he's still held, he's still first and check if he, if someone came, came over him.
Exactly, like, that's, that's part of it, um, I don't know, some like that, some didn't. But it was, it was pretty, pretty even.
Okay.
I don't know much about PKs, I am never squeezing this, though.
My only nitpick is I think you can go a little smaller, uh, and still get the same result, you can make it like eleven and you'll still figure out, like, if someone has aces, though. Doesn't matter if you go eleven or thirteen, if they have ace, ten suited, it doesn't matter if you go, right, they're still just gonna fold, right?
And I'll say this way, I think a lot of people in this spot just play too nittily, and then you let all these people, you know, realize their various equity, so like, we gotta find some buffs, and so, I definitely appreciate that hurt.
I, I'll still do this with like ace five off, ace nine off, honestly, like. Uh, I, I'll still do it for the bounty when I have this many chips, like, I'll, I'll get out alive.
Send me the hand history O P L, see what H R C wants to do without adjusting ranges.
Uh, I'll send you a screenshot, Ken, of all the bounties in play.
It's a wild spot. H R C, uh, the hand history may have it, uh, G G doesn't seem to always do it. I get the bounties in my hand histories sometimes, well, I don't know if I've ever seen it in G G poker yet, we'll see how it comes out.
Ken, do you want it, do you want the hand history in chips or big ones?
L P sent me the raw hand history, um, so that's fine, I can paste that, but if you wanna send me a screenshot, I guess, just in case, so I have the bounties if I have to add them, and then maybe payouts for the final two tables or whatever. Whatever's left. It's gonna take a while, it's a wild spot.
Call, 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 call. I mean, the guy with thirteen calling two chips, that's like, that's just ridiculous.
You guys think the wizard has some, something like that?
Definitely not.
Why not?
It's just.
Look how many callers there are.
I think my pile has something like that, but not for P K O.
There's no way this thirteen stack should ever have a call, right? Surely not. He's, he's just trying to get the bounty with some garbage.
You're right.
It did not give me.
Well, if he has aces, maybe.
Uh, you really wanna go five ways with aces?
Probably not, right?
Double up, even if they all fold, you double up.
Yeah, you probably just ship it, then.
Yeah.
So, the hand history didn't put the bounties in, I gotta do this manually, so, uh. Okay.
Manual labor.
Takes a lot longer. Uh, I can't see T Dot's bounty. Cover it up.
It's, uh, twenty six, it's twenty six, man.
One dude's got a hundred and forty six dollars. Uh, looks like sixty one thirteen here. And thirty one, much bounties. Big buy. Oh, I see the results. So, hi Jack, the guy, oh, you actually beat him, it says your bounty's plus third, so his bounty's twenty six oh six.
Yeah, that's correct.
Got payouts anywhere?
Something to you as well.
Alright. One, two, three, four, five, six, that's eight, final nine?
Yep.
So is this final table?
Yes.
Feels bad to me.
The run bad continues, Jesus.
Alright, so final table instead of that, uh, I gotta run it in future game in this because of P K O, alright, so. One, two, three, four, there's nine. Uh, P K O. Rises, total chips. Uh, four, four, five. And it's, my eyes are blurry, don't help. Looks right. Next. This. Oh, shit. Uh. Ah. Not been here.
Was under the gun who opened, right?
Yep.
Alright, so back to the action. Button, call a high jack, low jack, two X's, right? So we have one, two. Got to put these over calls in. Guess four. Oh. And you raised the thirteen. So, button go, high jack, low jack. Call. And then call. And then call.
I play fucking perfect and I just lose.
So honestly, why does it wanna do this? Open. Or. 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 A little difficult to set up. So I have to, it really wants you to raise a lot bigger if I put a raise in, um.
You wanna share the screen cam?
Yeah, I think some, Charles tried to set it up right, uh. Yeah, maybe it's gonna help me set it up, honestly. Math isn't my strong suit, so. And once in the raise to this. Here's the setting, so there's something wrong with this. What happens if I go to like two point five? I don't, this doesn't even make any sense to me right now. Oh, call, call, call. Eleven, so that is getting it there, let me just go, I don't know why this is this, I guess it's two point, I guess it's going two point the seven, the pot, not the initial raise, so this should be pretty good. As far as, even though it's not really a thing. Hmm, why did that change? Oh, wait. Small buy versus, oh, that's why it didn't change, I put it on the spot. Um, boom, 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 eleven point four. So, I guess, three, maybe? Someone said a smaller raise as well, right? So, twelve.
Yeah, I was thinking like eleven instead of thirteen.
The problem is if I put in multiple, like, if I put in like it, so it's smaller and the size he used, it's gonna split it.
Split, yeah, just pick one.
Let's just go size.
Yeah.
So why did it jump like all the way to this again? Looks like we're gonna be stuck at twelve. Just fine.
Twelve seems good.
Yeah, right? Oh. Oh, oh, twelve, alright, we're gonna have to run this like this, it's a big one, too. I'm gonna say the worst offsuit hand we squeezed was his ace queen off, honestly.
Hey, guys.
Hey.
Hello.
Welcome to the Friday morning poker study for you, study session.
Not quite Friday.
Oh, it was a joke, it took so long to set that up, it's Friday.
Yeah, I was just thinking, gonna hop in and just check, check out what you guys are up to.
Oh, Mr. Romano, we're up to no good, we're going down like a spot that shouldn't even exist.
You guys are in some rabbit hole.
But unfortunately, they are, they happen in real life to us.
Oh, Mr. Romano, tell me what you do here.
Oh, Mr. Romano, tell me what you do here. This is a final table, PKO.
Final table.
Final table PKO, okay?
This guy opens. This guy calls, the thing is, everyone want this guy's bounty. Bounty is in.
And by the way, his bounty's only worth thirteen dollars, he has.
Twenty six, twenty six though.
Well, you only get thirteen of it.
So, 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 so how, how big, how big was the standard bounty?
It's, it's the smallest bounty at the table.
It's a twenty six dollar bounty, thirteen is just, it ju- it just was what goes on your head, what other people can get, but twenty six goes to your balance.
Yeah, but, oh.
Yeah, it just says, it says plus thirteen on my bounty, like what's on my head, what people can collect.
Yeah, thirteen goes in your pocket.
It's the second smallest bounty at the table, yeah, you got thirteen, thirteen goes on your.
But what's the standard bounty, like when you. Well, it's five buy-ins, it's five buy-ins, so it's a five dollar twenty five.
Yeah, but.
Okay, okay.
Why don't you put all in at this point?
All in. I mean, I mean, uh. I guess, I guess we can call on big line, but I think, I think it's. Not necessary. Here, I think it's just too small. And we, I don't think that it's the best hand we can like. Go for it, maybe if it's like. Maybe if it's like more suited, I would start a bit more considerate, but. I think it's very marginal and I think it's, it's one of the, one of these, uh. Uh, places where I think people really overestimate. Uh, the value of, uh, going after, especially in final tables.
So which, what is it? Call, fold, raise?
I think he says fold, right, Romano?
I think we can call because we can flop the nuts. But I think there's no point in isoling, and I think there's no point in like doing anything crazy. Uh. I think I would just call because we can flop the nuts. And that's it.
I always can't fold for what it's worth from the beginning.
I, on your note about suitedness.
I would never fold because we cover everyone.
Final table.
Yeah, it's final table, but we cover everyone.
You just have to be aware if you make a queen that you. Are, yeah, you don't wanna put.
Yeah, you can go in there knowing that you're gonna fold top pair, but like. Just worth it to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, yeah. Uh, on the suited point, I would prefer to flat more with suited, I think, so I'm not gonna get. Jammed off the equity. Rather than squeezing.
So the thing is, it's certainly much more looser than like if, it, it's certainly much more looser than in like every like normal circumstance. But it's still like, in final tables, there are so many mistakes in bounty, uh, tournament, like it's, it's, uh. For, for sure, PKOs are looser, but people, uh, are too loose often.
So Danny, we studied squeeze ranges, uh, on and off, and typically you squeeze with more suited Broadway type stuff. Because if you get called, you want to get additional equity.
Exactly, exactly, and I don't think we're ever getting called when we squeeze here, I think we're getting jammed or, or we're getting a lot of folds, like. Who's gonna flat, we make a twelve, like. Is under the gun really gonna flat? I don't know, like, I can't think of a hand that really wants to flat. On a final table specifically.
For instance, if, uh, maybe if he would have like. King eight suited here or like king ten suited, I could consider three betting it here. But this hand is just. Yeah, I would never, I would never do anything crazy, I would just call and, and, and only because we can flop the nuts.
Shall we move on while it runs? Is it running?
I mean, it's running, it's gonna take a while, you could peek at it, I tell you right now, queen jack suit is not gonna come in, or queen jack off isn't gonna come into play. I doubt it. Um, but there's, this range has to get cleaned up a good bit yet.
Yeah.
So Louis, what's, what's your thoughts in here, in two, intuition?
I would just call.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You want me to show you what's there right now?
Yeah.
You found like a suited nine, Romano.
Isn't saying queen jack suited would be a fold?
It's losing money to play it at this point.
Seriously?
You're gonna get, you're out of position to, uh, let's see. But one. Cut off didn't call, right? Two, you're gonna be out of position to two players. Oh wait, are we small blind?
We're big blind.
Man, I said this up wrong.
Oh, can, can, can.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is also, uh.
Well, we can look at this.
What's interesting to consider it here is also that when you think about how in theory. Like, the early position, like, opens. Then the other one calls, like, already there. What's already assumed, but now if you would adjust, like, in theory. It's probably a bit tighter than in real life, because if you consider how people think. Like, how many people open looser because of that one guy? And how many people call looser because of that one guy? And if you then variable it all in, it's a bit different than in, uh, like. Standard theory that is like totally in full equilibrium.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you can run this without no looking, some guy will show with, uh, with five four off.
Yeah, well, we're not going down, I'm not, I already said before I do, I'm just gonna look at whatever this output gives me, because this is just an unrealistic spot and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My range forever.
I agree, I think, I think. I think whatever, whatever the answer is, the thing is, it's a very marginal spot, and if you just call, like. It's never anything too bad. And just not doing anything crazy, it's, it's, it's in that sense, very simple spot, so there's no point to like. Waste time and too much thinking about it.
Hold on, who called?
There's not much I could, like, there's not many two cards I could think of that I would fold in that situation. Just being last to act and only having to pay one more big blind. Like even deuce three, I feel like I'm calling in that situation.
They cut off for small, they cut off for small blind, oh, let me get this finished up, so we got, I, this guy opens, this guy's all in. Then who calls after?
So under the gun, um, early position fold.
Nobody, no, nobody calls, it's literally, I, I so didn't know everybody.
No, no, after the all-in, what other players called before it got to you?
Cut off button.
Yeah.
After the all-in, everything.
Cut off and button?
Yes, and small blind.
The small blind call too?
No, no, no.
No.
Can you go back?
Played again, yeah.
Alright, here, it's cutoff button, small blind folds.
Small blind folds?
Yep, so total players is under the gun. MP one. MP two, cutoff, but. And then me.
Oh, Jack. A Jack. Did you say the cutoff folds?
No, the cutoff calls.
Calls and the button calls, right?
Yep.
Alright, we can move on, I'll let, I'll let this run out, I set it up again, and, uh, we'll see what happens, give it. We can come back and revisit it.
Alright. So we squeezed, everyone folds, we get heads up, and we win.
So Danny, is what you're saying that if you saw that flop, that Jack would get you in trouble?
I. Potentially, uh, yeah, it's like Tim said, right, like you probably will end up having to. Call one flop bet and see what happens on the turn, if, if it goes like. Bet, fold, 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 we probably have to call one. Try to improve. But it's already dicey if the guy bets into like five players, right?
Yeah.
What are we supposed to do here, call or fold?
It was like, it was the same thing, it was like. I don't know what to do, I just, I just folded, I'm like.
Yeah, probably just.
A ten or an eight, I'm, I'm drawing to one out, like. But the thing is, we are actually like block some of the combos. Don't we? Sure, but this is a five dollar game, so. Uh, I, I don't know. Now that being said, this is, this is a very splashy player, so actually.
That's fine.
I was even considering jamming. That's suicide, I was never jamming. I mean, like, it's not gonna have a three quarters of a pot lead. Yeah, but you have, wait, what?
It's not the same size, sure. It's, uh, five point.
Uh, close enough, close enough, nevermind, I was looking at.
Four point twenty five instead of six.
It's the same thing.
Should you barrel this turn? That's my main question, flop bet is good, the turn. Do you ever bet this time?
His hand is not in range in general, so. I think in terms of ICM, like, he can bet this, but the problem is that if the other guy doesn't understand how tight he has to be. Then, uh, then betting becomes a bit different, uh, thing.
Reverse just to give up.
Cause like at the same time, you're running this in G P V, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, I mean, thing is. Him as a chip leader, he probably can barrel a lot more, but the problem is. If people are not adjusting to ICM correctly. Then, uh. Have to think about it. If it's worth it to bet again. Like, it's a, it's a bit the same thing, like, if you guys watched, um. Uh, one ICM webinar by Matt, uh, some time ago. So he found there a spot that you can actually like lead boards in, on the big lines. Uh, when you cover on boards that you usually like never lead. And it is because, like, due to I C, ICM implications. But, yeah, you have to know how much the other guy also knows how, how he can play to, to like even implement it. I called here because, yeah, yeah, I know, I know, this guy, I called here because this guy was still. With his turn leads, I rethought, I, I stopped, I, I know, I know.
He was getting the best of you when the.
He was getting, he was getting the best of me.
Whenever the bottom card pair. You were hearing the song in your, in your head, this guy probably doesn't have it, he probably just knows. Blah, 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 blah. Facing your mirror, putting on your clown makeup. So we went with the three bet with the Jack, then off. And then.
I think I would go smaller here.
Yeah.
In hindsight, I think so too.
So you raise and then you check this board? Is there a reason?
Yeah, I'm out of position, another gun.
Okay.
I, I, I like. I try to eliminate. My checking shot, oh my god.
Think you gotta call because you checked the board? Whereas if you bet, bet, it's always a fold.
Good point.
How you cap yourselves?
Yeah.
You got the Jack to.
Can't, can't fold here, I think.
I agree. Tell us about this hand, will we?
Uh, seemed like a pretty straightforward player. From my notes on him. So I just, that's the only reason I called it.
Okay.
I closed my eyes and folded, I mean, like, I didn't, I didn't snap fold or anything.
Oh, it's fine, if you have a read. That's a bit loose, but okay.
Aren't you at best calling to a chop there?
If they're not bluffing.
Hmm, think you beat a bunch of aces though, no?
No, it's a. Nine, nine on board.
It's a chop at best.
Yep.
Was it?
That player is just not good enough to turn his eight or a queen or pocket tens into a bluff there, or like pull me down, like he's just, he's not.
But you check the flop, so you show that you don't have a really good hand.
I mean, like, I'm, I'm checking the flop there, like, ninety-nine percent of the time, I, I just don't lead, I'm out of position.
Okay.
He's checking the flop with queen nine.
Like, the only exception of leading out of position was that hand with pocket sevens that we saw on eight, six, twos. I, I rarely lead. Out of position, I really don't like it, unless I'm in the big line.
Do you think this is a good forward?
Ish. Hmm.
Yes.
Probably. Block some of those bluffs.
Don't you need to continue with the ace a club?
I think you need an over to the six, and preferably like a Broadway card. I mean, with, to go with the ace. You'll have actual flush draws, you'll have king X, you'll have some six X. You have, uh, seven, eight of hearts.
Okay.
My note on this guy is. It's the calling station and ICM shitter. Oh my god.
Maybe you could like click it back or something.
Yeah, it's like all on the flop, at G P V.
Huh, okay. I've, um, I've calibrated to their ranges of.
I don't think it's a barrel card here.
I don't think so either, I think now we have showdown, I should have checked here. Somehow we get away with it.
Mm-hmm. I would think I would bet her one.
Get out of my game.
Why do you tree bet here?
Let me, let's see. I, I mean, I, I, I would imagine he just had a high ATS, but like, I still don't think. Hmm. Not sure.
I think if you want to three bet here, uh, if you, if you would want to three bet here, you would have to size smaller.
Yeah, probably like four point eight or five point two, something. But I would also just call rather.
Keep losing to him.
Yep.
I like the sicer, I think that's good. One, two, okay, two.
I wonder if it's, uh, if you ever turn it into a bluff after the one-two.
Oh, king ten suited. I don't know if I'm calling with that from him, probably not, limp call, that's.
Yeah, no.
Not great.
He paid the price.
Yeah.
This is, is this GJ?
Yes.
Yep.
I think, I think, I don't, I think I don't like the jam with sevens there too.
Would that be a decent jam then?
No.
No. Like it's plus C V, but, uh, you don't, you don't want to, they're like or like in twenty B, B B's, you never jam sevens on, on the button. The twenty B B plus, even like fifteen, I think it's not the jam anymore.
You bet one, he raised, you call, you click it back, okay? Okay. The Willie is out there in the streets battling? Check, 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 yeah, okay. Five, that call, check, check. That call, who is losing, who is winning this time?
No, he lost to a, a, a kicker.
That's a big jam too, right? They can just call this.
Oh my goodness.
I think it's not the jam. The problem with, the problem, if you're, so if you are jamming every time you have an ace, that means that when you hit, uh, when you play post flop, you never have ace boards. You can't jam every ace, you have to have some of the specially suited ones, you want to call with aces.
Of course not, I mean, I called, I called with ace five suited, literally two hands ago.
Yeah, but you jam here.
I just, I just chose just to jam.
Are you tired?
I mean, I was tired, but I, I just, I, I thought.
No, I mean, I was being serious, I, sometimes you can, you make, like, I don't know if it's a mistake, feels like one, but.
I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's a mistake.
Wizard says you wanna flat a seven suited and below, which is pretty typical.
Okay, but, but.
All the suited.
Okay, but look at the E V of jamming versus flattening.
Right, I mean, it's gonna be pretty.
It is significant, actually, in, in the, in the heads up, in the heads up, the essence, it is significant, actually.
Especially if you think you're better than your opponent, you wanna play post flop more than just, uh, take your edge away and run shit.
Yeah. And the problem also.
You jammed off suit, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's harder to navigate with, with, with these, uh, so it's better to jam them.
So you're basically jamming when you want them to fold?
Not necessarily, but you're jamming to make your life easier. But at the same time, if you're jamming every ace X, then suddenly all your ace X boards, you don't have them anymore, because you don't, you, you don't have an ace anymore. If the opponent knows that you're jamming every ace, he also knows, if he's good player, he knows that you, you don't have any ace board.
Well, first of all, he can't, he can't know that, so it's like not that big a concern over.
Know that, if he knows, if he, if he sees that you jam, if he.
But he hasn't seen. That's, but I know what you're saying, but, and to add on to that, you, like you said, you need to choose some to flat and the suited to answer various questions, the suited ones play better post flop, so you choose those to flat.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, and this is when he.
Anyone folding?
Dooley slow rolled him here, somehow didn't get punished.
Woo, nice wood finish at turn.
How much was this for?
This was four.
Sixteen hundred bucks?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-five?
Thirteen plus the bounties.
Twenty-two.
How many buys was that? That's huge.
Four hundred bonds.
Four hundred.
Oh my god.
Especially for an Ontario field.
Yeah, he defeated the biggest Ontario field ever.
Oh, it was in Ontario?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was G G, the big one, because you said there was like four thousand people or something, right?
There was, there was.
Ah, okay.
Crazy, right?
I used to say that to people turning out up there, man, that's good.
Yeah. Alright, well, that was a nice one, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.